I'd like to call this meeting January 10, 2023, 6:03. First thing I want to do is have a moment of silence for past principal at Sunderland, principal here at Frontier Regional, and also superintendent Marty Barrett.
If you don't mind, I could say a few words further. Just because she was clumped here, but she was very close. She hired me, as you guys all know, and was my mentor for many years, and then mentored to many of the administrators and teachers in this building. Just amazing person who always made it about the kids, and to the point where, as a fellow administrator, sometimes it was even frustrating. She really was about, you know, what is it? What are we doing about the kids? And she set a tone that still carries in this building, that makes it the kids' building. When we talk about making changes and that kind of thing, we used to talk about, you know, we talked about the kids and vandalizing a bathroom. This is your bathroom. Why are you doing this? You know what I mean? We talked about changing rules. She made sure she had kids involved, and it was always about that, right up from where she came in and took over National Honor Society because she wanted to have more pop and circumstance and more student ownership of that process and that kind of thing. Just, I just wanted to say a little bit further only because I know many people in this room worked with her to some level, to some capacity, and then we just left her service about an hour ago. Just, you know, just an amazing person, so I just wanted to take it one step further here, and I appreciate the moment. Thank you.
I'd like to review minutes from November 8. Anybody have any questions? I know I wasn't there, and I see Olivia. We're both not there. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chair.
Second, let's see. All in favor?
The superintendent award was on the original one that got sent out, but not on the one in front of you. I don't know if it's on in front of you. We do have a guest here for the superintendent's award.
Let's do that next time.
All right. So hand it over to me.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce Sidney Scanlon. Sidney, just stand up, and just everybody can see you clearly. This year's superintendent award winner. With her is her mother, Holly, and her father, Tom Scanlon, some of you may have seen before. I'm going to read my little speech. We recognized Sidney at the awards dinner that happened in December, where all Franklin County superintendents' awards winners come together. You don't stand for the whole thing. Do we make her stand for the whole thing? Relax. And it was a wonderful evening, and I just want to share what I said about her that evening, and I'm just so proud to, again, present Sidney. Sidney is strong academically, self-motivated team player, and a school leader is the shorthand description of Sidney Scanlon. Sidney is the top of her class and is in National Honor Society. She's been in a maximum honor role all through school, and has a 4.62 GPA. And as I said that evening, 4.62 has got to be a type of, it was the highest in the room. It just goes to show the amount of AP courses and just the difficult schedule that she's had on her way through Frontier. This year, Sidney is taking AP Chemistry and AP Statistics. In her junior year, she took AP Calculus, AP Biology, and AP English Language and Composition. In her sophomore year, she took AP Human Geography. In 2022, she received the AP Scholar Award because of her outstanding exam scores. In 2020, Sidney was the National Latin Exam Silver Medal Certificate winner. Sidney's AP Statistics teacher, Steve Blinder, told me this quick story. Mr. Blinder said, "In AP Stats, I usually write a new test or modify the old one each unit so that may emphasize the different parts of the unit from one year to the other. So I want the test to be accurate and reflect the emphasis I put into each topic. Secretly, for every chapter test, I use Sidney's test. She's an incredible, hard-working student who rarely has to be taught something twice. She is my answer key." And he said, "Let's keep that our secret." So only on television. Best, best, exactly. Sidney is the captain of this year's Frontier volleyball team, who just a few months ago won another state championship. This is Sidney's second state title, as she was a continuing member of the state championship team her freshman year in 2019. She has been a multiple-year winner of the Massachusetts All-State Award in addition to numerous team awards. Sidney is also a member of the school's tennis team, where she plays doubles. So good looking partner. Also in sports, not also in sports, outside of sports, Sidney is active in the model United Nations team, is a member of the math modeling team, the feminist club, the Latin Club, the Health Occupations Students of America Club. In this past spring, she also served as the inaugural boys' high school volleyball team manager, where she helped recruit players, organize, and direct practice and manage games. Outside of school, Sidney volunteers with Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Franklin County, works as an office assistant in her famous accounting firm, and provides pet care services. And I'm sure she'll leave a card maybe you need. Prior jobs have also included working at Yankee Candle, store as a retail associate, and being a youth soccer KIP counselor for the University of Massachusetts. To get a glimpse of her as a person, I got this note from her AP English teacher, Ms. Varney. Sidney is both quietly conscientious student and supportive classmate and friend. She finds a tenuous balance between stepping up and giving space. Not too long ago, Sidney asked me to look over a supplemental short essay. Sidney wrote about a close friend of hers, someone who has been a strong support for many, many years. She captured some beautiful characteristics of this person's and friendship as a whole. It wasn't trite, or juvenile, or superficial, the way reflections can sometimes get when we write about our feelings or about universal themes like friendship. Not only did I gain a whole new awareness and respect for her friend, I saw a gracious and rooted side to Sidney. She is someone who thoroughly understands friendship beyond your camaraderie or good company. I appreciate her ability to lift someone else into the light, because what that light did was to hold them both. Very nice. An impactful experience for her future took place this past summer, when Sidney was selected for an internship at Bay State Franklin Medical Center. Here, she was able to shadow doctors and nurses in two departments, in an emergency room and lab. Additionally, she was able to visit a number of other departments, including rehabilitation, oncology, radiology, pharmacy, and pioneers women health. This opportunity reinforced Sidney's desire to study science and possibly go into medical field. I don't think Frontier is ready to see her leave, but Sidney plans next year is that she is committed to Union College, to continue her love of volleyball, and possibly a pre-med major. I am so very proud. Frontier Superintendent Award winner Sidney Scanlon, I presented her tonight.
Got a speech?
Any questions we have for her?
Want to put her on the spot? Good job.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You're next.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. So I sent out the expense reports to you. I don't have a formal report. There's been no major change to any of the expense lines. There's no new concerns. Nothing has popped up since we last met, but there were 45 warrants totaling a large amount, $4,49,531.35.
Two months.
It was two months of warrants.
Two months.
Yeah. December, actually, there might have been some from late November, too, in there, but yes, in January. And if you have questions about line items, after looking at those reports, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Thanks, Shelley.
Sure.
Any public comment tonight? A day on public on there? Student council report?
Hi, I'm Amory, and I'm here from the student council. So, I just have a list of updates. So the student council is putting on a winter semi-formal dance on the 21st in the gym. It's intended to celebrate the end of the semester and is geared towards students, so that's hopefully going to go well. The STEPS program is running a food and hygiene drive for the Amherst Survival Center through the month of January, so collectments can be found at the entrances. The Frontier Writing Center led a finals skills workshop and continues to offer one-on-one tutoring sessions for all high school students. And also, 8th and 10th grade health classes are going through their One Love Healthy Relationships units, where they focus on learning how to spot the signs of unhealthy and healthy relationships, communicate boundaries, and access resources for support. So that's just what's currently going on with the student body.
Anybody have questions? Hey, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're next, George. Hi, so I sent out the report to everybody. I did send one amendment. I did have to make a change to the school choice sheet, which we had the wrong numbers initially. But so just a few things, so once again, so Yankee Candle has donated $4,000 to Frontier, so I did want to give a big thank you. I know, I saw that it's on the agenda to be voted on, so.
That's all right.
I think it's a good thing, but it's going to be very helpful, as always, so we greatly appreciate that. This year also, for the first time in a few years now, we're finally going back to DC. That is, so we've been meeting to continue planning that every other week. We are financially, we're doing really well financially with, in terms of the fundraising, in terms of the gifts, in terms of the number of students that signed up to go. I think there, out of the entire 8th grade, I want to say there are less, or fewer than 10 students who are not signed up to go, which is, we're really excited about. And then the other, the other part of it that I should also say is that the students that are not going to DC, we've actually, we're planning field trips for them while they're here. We're connecting with Morse Hill and the Yiddish Book Center, so they're going to be doing that in lieu of going to DC. So that's going on. Also, and Olivia can chime in about, if she wants to talk about this, she can, but we're moving forward to Chicago with our new director, Tom Kleznick. We're really excited about that. Production dates are happening the weekend of March 17. And then I submitted everybody the school choice recommendations, so once again, we've opened up for school choice. We're going to be closing the applications for school choice as of February 1st. But basically, you know, I know that we'll be voting on whether or not we should be moving forward with school choice. Our school choice numbers, they are healthy, they continue to be healthy. We'll probably, even after we close, we can still accept students based on as needed basis. We would still have the ability to accept students if they applied after the February 1st deadline, if we had space, and at this point in time, we would have space. So, so just so you know, that's what's going on as well. So I know that there's a vote that will happen on the agenda also. So, but things are going well. Things are really, the semester's going to be ending in about a week and a half also.
What are we going to do with the $4,000? Have you had years yet?
So, right now, the initial, so initially, what we're looking at is using to help support some of the students for financial aid to go on the Washington DC trip, and also to allow the students to go to Morrison.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for George?
That was actually, one of my questions was that those less than 10 that are not going, you don't get the sense that this is a financial restriction that's?
No.
Okay.
No. Actually, no. Yeah.
That's a good number to call one.
Yeah.
Really good. Okay. Unfinished business, capital projects, tennis courts, boiler, roof.
Those who are digital, don't take one. I'm passing on. Oh, there's two pages.
Two pages.
The Frontier Capital Improvement Subcommittee's met a few times this fall, and we really have a lot to talk about tonight. So the agenda looks short, but this is a big topic because it's talking about a lot of projects, or three projects that are a lot of money. And so what I'm going to do is going to take you through each one, and we probably should go at the end, because cumulatively, the projects are related to each other in the fact of how we're funding it in different ways. Okay? So.
There's two pages. They're like in sequence there. Grab the next two.
Yeah, it is. Well, it's modified because it's the same information. I just sent it out, you know, it was really.
It says I need access.
Ask for it. So if you request access, I'll give you. Yeah, I see it. There you go. There you go. Yeah, because you're on your Gmail account.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes you're paying. All right, here we go. Here we go. Let's jump into this. So the three projects that we're looking at are the tennis court, the boiler, and the roof replacement. And I'm going to start with the tennis court project. Right now, the tennis court project is estimated to come in around just under $300,000. It is to resurface the tennis courts and to, a total resurface, taking the asphalt right out and replacing the fencing around it. So kind of brand-new tennis courts, but in the same footprint. So there's nothing, it's a new set of tires, so to speak. What we, through discussions with, and if any of the committee wants to present, you're welcome to, but I know you guys usually defer to me. We determined that, you know, a lot of the tennis court use, especially recently with the pickleball craze that is going on, you know, we thought about, instead of going to the towns and putting it on their warrants, that we should go and talking, remember that the capital subcommittee's made up of four select board members and four school committee members? So we're talking with the town people, governments at the same time, in going after CPA money to help offset this cost. Instead of a warrant article that goes after their free cash, perhaps they could, you know, towards recreation. And so what we're going to do is, what we'd like to do on your approval, is request $100,000 from the four towns based on their, what they, their cost share to Frontier is. So Shelley will chime in on what those numbers are in a second, I probably should throw them on there. And then the rest balance we paid from, by Frontier using E and D, and/or other free cash funds, meaning E and D or school choice, depending on how some of this other stuff works out, and we'll explain that, the other two projects. The timeline would be to, if you agree to do this, is to open up the bids this winter, almost immediately, or, you know, starting next month or so, to do the bids, so that we can get this worked on this summer slash fall, depending on when the contractors and the bids fall. As placement, as we learned with the track, also affects bid costs. So if they say, "Hey, we can do it in September for $50,000 less," we're going to do it in September. You know, that kind of thing, you know, as long as we can do it without disruption to the school. We would be making the decision prior to the approval of town meetings of the CPA money. And there is a risk on doing that, but the problem is that the tennis courts have reached a point where they're going to be, and I think we might be able to get through one more year, and I'm sure they're going to allow us to play on them this year. And the cracks have now, have gone to, you know, they went from the width of a dime to another the width of a half-dollar. So I talked with the attorney, he said you're allowed to do that because you have other funds that, you're suggesting they pay for it in that such a way, and you have other funds that can back that up, because we could transfer school choice if we had to cover the last $100,000. But we do feel that the courts themselves, and in discussion with even, you know, like I said, the town select board members that are part of this group, there are enough towns people using this percentage-wise, one third paying for it by the towns, and two-thirds paid for it by the regional school, feels appropriate. Shelley did plug in what the cost of each town through their CPA funds are.
I think Deerfield's the only one that hasn't requested information from us for CPA funds. Conway, Whately, and Sunderland asked us for details for their applications.
And Deerfield is the post-town greatest user one would deem proportional. We also, for those watching at home, we also are going to paint pickleball lines on the court as well, so that they can be dual-use, so that, and right now, I mean, they're still playing out there now, but if you were out, I think I said this at the last meeting, if you came to any of the fall sports games, there's three or four, five, six courts going on the weekends, they're doing tournaments and such, so it's really nice to see the public using, using the courts. Also, we do use the courts for gym classes, it's not just for tennis team. We use it for gym classes, and we also use it for special education classes, go out there as well, create a safe, safety area zone that they can.
We just started a pickleball club.
And we just started a pickleball club. As we probably should, because we have to compete with those folks that are out there.
I guess, I just have a stupid question about pickleball at tennis courts. Is there any different type of wear and tear doing pickleball versus tennis?
No. Sneakers on asphalt.
Yep.
So.
The bribe, the court, really.
Has there been any formal outreach to the lards?
So I met with the, I did meet with the pickleball president. Came in with, came with his entourage, very powerful individual in town. I did meet, and they are, upon your approval, they are going to be sending letters of support because they'd like to see pickleball spaces, and that they'd be, they have members from all towns, and they're going to do, I say they don't have to do a letter campaign and drive our towns crazy, but one letter with all the people that are participating in pickleball included and such. So once this gets approved, I would still like to send them a note, and they would send it out that they approve. So they get an idea, because those who haven't seen it, they get a list that say, these are the fine people participating in regulating our program from our four towns.
Letters, yes. Large cash donations, no.
I also reached out, I did, I'm shameless in that area. I said, "If you are thinking about lights or anything like that, now's the time to do it. If you have any big donors," and they said they would ask, but I've not heard anything bad on that. I mean, obviously, you don't need football stadium lights, but, you know, every tennis court in Florida has lights on, and I imagine, you know, the cost of that isn't too high.
Although, when this is going out to bid, and might it not be worth, if this is on the same footprint, and there is such an appeal to try to expand this kicking in, if we improve, if we increase the footprint and they had a couple more pickleball courts that are smaller, would, it might be worth kind of getting a little bit of information and tossing that towards the pickleball folks and saying, "Listen, we could make this bigger for you guys if you guys can come up with this amount of fun."
Yeah. Right now, the footprint, we run into problems, I think, if we change the footprint. But the idea of, you know, we could do with the light contingency is, I can, I can talk with Berkshire Design, you know, we'd also probably have to go to planning board for that because it's changing the footprint and neighbors and that kind of stuff, but it's not the stadium lights, you know, the, you know, tennis lights are much lower and not as, whatever, maybe doing one side lit, I mean, because they are playing into the night, you know.
I know, they're not there. They're passionate folks.
All right. So that's the first. We would be voting on one that recommending that the town pay, ask the town to pay $100,000 from CPA based on the numbers there, and approve the funding, the remainder of the cost, which would be approximately the $190,000. It could be more. So, you know, that could fluctuate. But we did get those numbers this fall, so it's not like we're running off last year. The number actually was higher last spring, it was 220 or 320, 340-ish, so it's come down slightly, but it could go right back up. All right. So that's the first thing. Next one is the boiler. So we did have a boiler study that came back, and the subcommittee reviewed it. The, the study recommended that we do replace the two boilers, replace with three higher efficiency boilers. They said there are no green projects that are economically feasible to the range of, you know, we're talking about geo, because I asked them to look at geothermal and those kind of things, you know, full solar array, that kind of, you know, it just, we don't have, the amount of BTUs these boilers have to put out to, in, to use the current system that we have that heats the school, really, you have to replace them with boilers. There is a huge difference with the boilers, we would be placing them with them. We would be going to, right now, our boilers, I wish Bill was here, but I'm going to try my best, I believe we have a three-stage boiler, high, medium, low, okay? To kind of, kind of break that down simply, and if anybody knows more about this stuff or was in the meeting and remembers it better than I, please jump in. These are going to be 10-stage boilers, so that on that crisp spring morning where you need to have heat in the building, but it's going to be 75 degrees by noon, you can put the boiler in at 2%, you know, and get some heat going without, so you're going to be doing energy conservation by going to a higher efficiency boiler within, because I know some people, like, what about carbon footprint and those kind of things? You know, we can start looking at doing other things to offset, you know, talking about putting solar on the roof or that kind of thing, not to heat the building with that electricity, but to offset other, you know, other carbon footprints by the school, but this really wasn't the place to do it in a way that was going to be cost, cost-effective. Again, also going to three boilers, allowing you to just turn one on, and the way the three work together, the three combined give you enough BTUs when you get those minus 10 degrees days, 20-degree days, that kind of stuff. That is, that is the follow-up from the report. The, the cost of this is about $325,000, and that does not include the installation, that's just the cost of the three boilers. And then we're going to have to come up with another $175,000 to install them, so it's a half a million dollar project. The boiler number is a little bit closer than the estimated installation number, meaning the boiler number is what it was, you know, had we ordered them, we put this proposal together at the end of summer. So, you know, that number is, it will be, will be relatively close. We can submit to DESI to use Esser III money to be applied to this because it does fall, we believe it falls under HVAC. And we can see, we have to file, you know, if we move forward with this, we will file this because it will affect the money that we have for the roof, which is another conversation we're going to have in a few minutes. The plans for this is to plan the winter, bid this winter slash spring, install summer depending on if we can get the actual boiler pieces. Some, some boiler pieces and stuff have been six months to a year out. Our current boilers, you know, are limping along. The, one of the questions that they did ask in the study is like, do your patching go for the next five years? And the recommendation was, based on fuel efficiency, the fact that you don't know what you're going to be able to patch and be able to find parts, given the market and the time to get those parts. The recommendation was not. He said you certainly can go the route of patch and pray for the next five years because, you know, the current boilers are functioning, even though we've taken sections out. You know, what you think of a boiler like a rib cage, you know, in the water is going through each of the ribs, you can lose, as we've had failing ribs, we pull those ribs out, and so there's just actual holes in the, in the water filters shooting through those ribs, obviously decreasing the efficiencies and that kind of stuff. But that's what we have been doing, and one could limp along, but again, the committee, after reviewing the report and discussing and such, is making the recommendation that we move forward and replace it now. The cost of those boilers are only going to go up, you know, and the cost of everything is only going to go up. And so, and currently, right now, we will have the money between school choice funds to do that. The past few years, we've had, because of the use of Esser and some other savings with different things, we have a greater amount of school choice funds than we've had in the past, and so using it for this kind of one-time purchase, not going to the towns for capital, seems like the prudent idea. Questions on boiler? And then, or you can save them to the end, and we can, we can field them there, too.
What struck me about that boiler engineering report was just the last part, when you said your boiler.
we will have the money between school choice funds to do that. The, the past few years, we've had because of the use of Esser and some other savings with, with different things, we have a greater amount of school choice funds than we've had in the past. And so using it for this kind of one-time purchase, not going to the towns for capital seems like the prudent idea. Questions on boiler? And then, or you can save them to the end and we can, we can feel them there too.
What struck me about that boiler engineering report was just the last part where you said your boilers are past the end of their life expectancy. They are going to fail catastrophically in the next few years. Your choice is when you, you can deal with it. You have to deal with it. Your choice is when you want to deal with it.
Right. And I think the idea here is that if we have to do it when they're broken, it's going to cost more. If, if we have to deal with it when it's broken during cold season, it's going to cost more because we're going to have to put everything on expediting and that kind of stuff. And we won't have the ability to go outbid it in details there. The last part is the roof replacement. All right. And so I'm going to share. This is the map, aerial view of our school. Colored in by one of our third graders, you know, colored in by Bill Hilton. And what, what we're showing you here is that, so we discussed the roof. In the roof, to do the whole roof in the current market would probably cost between three to five million dollars. Okay. The whole roof does not need to be done immediately. However, we are having failing sections of the roof. So this, the subcommittee talked about you can go to the building authority, the school building authority. And roof and windows is one of the subcategories of that, and you can do a project through them. There's a lot of discussion. We have many, long discussions on that because of the escalator and cost when you go through that. Because you're doing everything through a Boston firm and we saw that through Deerfield. There were a lot of complaints within the community or different boards and stuff that they felt that costs more than we went through to get it. And then we did that differently when we did it, I believe in Conway, we did not go through the building authority and it was a much smoother project. They believe it came in over cost. So that was a lot of the history of our communities when we talk about roofs. So what we did is we had the roof study done. And the roof, for the most part, as he described it, is the assets are in good shape, meaning that you have your roof, your flat roofs, and those are the colored areas. Above us is the slanted steel roof. Is that you have insulation. That insulation hasn't been penetrated by water yet, meaning that you'd have to replace all the insulation in combination with that. And they were able to do that. They did the scan. That's what we paid that $20,000 for. They did the scan of the roof to see where the integrity of it was. And they also believe that we could do this in sections. Okay. The committee discussed, you know, right now, I don't think any town has the appetite for a three to five million dollar additional loan on top of the 1.8 that we haven't really started paying principal on yet. And the original idea of the 40, $400,000 that we had toward that was to repair portions of the roof, not do the entire roof. The problem is when, you have to remember, when that report came out, that was 2015. So now we're almost eight years later. Yeah, eight years later. And, you know, the roof is getting older each year. So I wanted to just overshare the different colors here. See if I can. This, can everybody see the pointer here? The green area on the, on the left there, that is the middle school. And so on the other side of that, where that line would be the tennis courts. This, the pink area is this long section here. We're inside the square, which is the library. The other green area is the auditorium. The left-hand side of that is the art rooms. Uh, bathrooms, art rooms. And weight room. And then you have girls locker room. And then the big square is the gym. The other pink side is the boys locker room. And then blue area is the three, the three-story high school. And then the other side is there's these little landings that are above the music rooms. This, this lower this lower area here are the band room and the strings room. What they, it is, they basically broke it off by priority of need. Right now, the pink area above the locker room is in the grace, is in, is in, we are leaking every year. We can try and do patch those leaks annually. There are a few pieces of equipment on this roof. But the second area that we're having leaks is this stretchway here. And some, nice of you may have been, there was one parent that a few years ago where we had a bucket in the hallway. And everybody thought it was a, I was doing some kind of scheme, like sure, there's, you just put some water in that bucket. But we do have some leaks on this. A lot of it is coming from the seam, came from the seam between this and the, the library, but the roof is made up of a material, a PVC material that is, that does degrade over time. The sun beats on it and it starts to flake and starts to slowly work away. So you know, the idea is to break into phases. And the first being phase one, the second being phase two, which is the band room and girls locker room and gym. Phase three, as you can see, is the auditorium and middle school. And phase four is the high school. And the flat area above the art rooms. So when we talk about phases, and there's a, basically a square footage for each one of them. So I'll leave this here. So in the handout that you have or on your computer, we've broken down the phases and there's two types of, of course, there's two qualities of the roof layment. You have a 060, which is basically a 20-year, and 090, which is a 30-year. Okay. And the interesting question, conversation that came up is, what do you do? 20-year or 30-year? Does the cost make a difference? And at what point are we replacing this building? Crazy conversation to have, right? Because and people at home are going, what? A new school? But eventually we got to start thinking about that. It's like, what is the, what is happening underneath and how long until we do a full refurbish of this entire building? And so what we discussed was that perhaps that's 30 years away. But let me back up. I think I went ahead myself here. So we want to break this up into them phases. And the phase timeline is, phase one is to be done this year. Into next year, rather. Phase two is three to five years out. Phase three is five to seven years out. And phase four is however else those numbers are, you know, that kind of thing. And we're basically, we've reached the end of our life of the roof on paper, but we haven't had leaks in yet in those other areas. So it's like, we can ride this roof a little bit longer. And the idea was to create a capital stabilization account to start putting money toward in toward the roof and then start doing some financial planning with that, as kind of getting on the town's radar. If those, those estimate number of years out, you know, you know, we can limp along, roofs can limp along even longer, or we could start having major you know, seam problems and repair problems that are too costly to you know, they're going to want us to speed up to repair. So the idea is to do phase one. Use the $400,000 that are available from the band loan. And if we get approval from DESI to use the Esser funds for the boiler, that will relieve some funds to be able to do the full part of phase one. If, if the cost comes up too high through the bidding, we would just do the area over the locker room and not do the area over here. And just kind of do a phase 1.5 later on is kind of the, the next step before we go to phase two. But we don't want to spread ourselves too thin on, on some of these spendings. So as I say, we're going to ask DESI for Esser funds for the boiler. If it frees monies, then we could complete the other $175,000, $175,000 that is needed on top of the 400,000. Throw a lot at you there. Questions where we're at right now?
Okay. At what point do we decide which of the two kinds of roofing material?
So we recommended that the first one be done with 90 because by the time we get to the second part of the roof, it's going to be 10 years down the road. Anyway, and at that point, the rest of the building might be considered a 20 years before we start doing a full rehab of the building. So, I mean, within 30 years, you're going to do a full rehab of the building. So it is one with them. If I was in your position 30 years from now, you can see yourself sitting at the table 30 years from now, which isn't crazy because Bill is sitting here. But, but those are kind of things that, you know, we, we did discuss as that. And that's why we broke it into phases because it could be. And I don't think, there certainly isn't an appetite to replace a roof that's not leaking yet. I know that's not, not everybody would agree with that, that knowledge, but that, that approach rather, but that's, I think.
I don't think anybody would fight you for logic of getting 10 more years out of it for another $80,000.
Correct. Especially phase one, because the next phase may not happen until five years, seven years out, or maybe, and the whole thing may not be completed 10 years out. And then along the way, we can make determination. You know, maybe something crazy will happen. The price will come down.
Finally get to the end, you'll be having the phase five, which is redoing phase one. Yeah. So.
Correct. And that's, right. And that's the frustrating part with all of our capital planning is like, once you fix something, you better put the timer about when you're going to replace it again. Right? You know, and we start talking to you about, like the frontier truck's doing fine right now, but eventually it's going to be so many years that frontier truck and it's going to be back on the list again, you know, that kind of thing, you know, those kinds of things. But anyway. That is, that is the plan.
I wasn't at the last meeting with these projects possibly going on at the same time. Do we, we know Bill has a full boat. Do we need a corporate of works to oversee these big projects? Just a question.
It's a good question. So right now, we are, excuse me, spacing there. So the tennis courts would be, would be bidded this, bidded, you know, this winter for a, for a summer completion. This would not go out to bid until some, summer, fall, to be done the following summer. So this, actually work on this would not actually happen until 24.
I also think with the tennis court and likely the boiler, like we're going to be working with Berkshire Design Group again, who oversaw the track. So I think it'll be the same concept that they're really the ones on the ground, making sure that the charges are done.
Right. And, and there were more moving parts with the track. I mean, there were, you know.
Hopefully the first. Whoever did our track, I forgot the name of whoever did our track, hopefully we'll get dicks because those guys were super out there.
It is a, it is the bid process, but you know, they were, they were wonderful work.
The boiler will have to hire an engineer as well. They'll have to help us build the specs and the plans. While we've had the study done, we don't have that piece of the bid process ready yet. So.
And all public projects have to be engineered. So, so we can't just say, hey, you know, it's a hot and cold line going into this thing. You really need to do a whole engineering thing though. They got to come and do the whole. There's actually more to it than that. But for those watching at home, it's like, you're cooking for a boiler. There's a cold line, a hot line. There's a lot more things they got at different, that all has to be engineered going in.
I imagine somewhere in this boiler project some certainty written into this thing that once we begin, we have the supply chain issues and all the other crap that's happened with trying to get things in the last two years, that we get like a third of the way through the project and go, the, the thing's on a barge somewhere between here and East Asprey and nobody can find it. And then we don't have to, he's still doing the building.
I mean, that's a real, real problem. We have a generator in Conway that we've been waiting for. It's a $60,000 purchase that is, we're what, like 18 months now? And that van you all approved two years ago, still hasn't even been gone to process. So.
The good news is that you won't have to replace it as soon.
Did we get it at the old price?
No, they, they canceled the original order and they're charging us more for the new order, which hasn't even gone out to build yet. So I don't want it to.
So literally a year after, you know, basically there was a supply issue. Shelley wrote them this summer and said, what, what, what's going to happen, you know, and they said they can't fulfill your order a year later.
And still getting the runaround now. Like I, I literally just had a conversation with the dealer a week ago because we really need the van, right George?
And if it's, if it's a Chevy, let's say, just say it's a Chevy dealer, doesn't matter if we, he won the bid, but it doesn't matter if we went to somebody else or canceled.
So it's on a state contract. So we have to use certain dealers on a state contract. With the new law being changed for the thresholds, we may be able to push out to another dealer, but this, it's, the problem exists no matter where it is. And, you know, I think the Ford Econoline that we're trying to get is the kind of van that we want. It's not the Econoline anymore, is it?
The state approved dealers in the area, they, they get an allotment every year. They, they put in years in advance. This year, we know this because we just had to buy a truck from the fire department. They, 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 their allotments, what they were expecting, they're getting one quarter of that number of vehicles.
And that was a used truck.
Yeah.
That was a used truck that they bought in the buying, right?
Yeah.
I've even tried finding someone, there's a, a company out by Boston that will buy vans empty and then retrofit them for your needs. And I, I can't even get a quote from those kind of folks. So it's pretty frustrating. It is, it is a problem.
So we're not going to pull the boiler out. We have the boiler sitting in the park. But that's where you're going to, so the timeline's going to have to be, yeah. And, you know, yeah, whoever we have for the install, is it going to take something out until they have the product to put in? Is there having that problem? We will make sure.
That might be a one out, replace one and take the other one out.
I think they have to do all three at one. And, and you have to remember, those boilers don't fit through the door. So that was another kind of thing like, you know, that was one of the problems like we, because when we were talking about originally, like can we replace one and not the other? You can't, literally it's two Volkswagen's, folks park next to each other in that room. Volkswagen buses, they're really that big. And they're going to be downstream to a higher efficiency, smaller. I don't know. What are we going to do with all that space in there?
Storage.
Office. It's hot. No, it's hot. Maybe it won't be as hot. They won't run the same way. Right now, the outside that furnace is the temperature of the furnace. All right. So you can see how they all, what's that?
We need a vote?
We need to vote.
I think we need to talk about money as part of the vote as well, not just approving the projects, but how much from each pot.
So why doesn't Shelley walk us through? We should vote each one separately because I think we should vote each one separately for the fact that because the cost of each one's is, is, is specific. You know what I mean? And these are the things that if someone has a problem with it, they're going to come back at us with, not they don't like the, the tennis courts, but we didn't do the process properly. So let's just, let's do this one by one. And it is a lot of money. So.
And do you have a sense of when you would know back about the Esser III funds?
So we're in the process of looking at what the state requires for capital requests. There's a form that we have to fill out. There's an amendment to the budget that they've already approved. So we have to wait for both of those pieces to come back. There might also be a requirement that they want to see the actual specs and bid documents. So it could be some time. So we're basically going to front this money, get it back. You know, we already have the Esser money, so it's just journal entries. So, you know, we're not actually just waiting for it. It's here. And that's to Darius's point, whereas if we don't get approval for this until summer, when we're already done these projects, we could then take that money. And we're only looking at asking for about $100,000 from Esser, not the full amount for the boiler, because we just don't have that much money left. But we could take that money and use it.
And Esser has, there's columns that you can't use all the money for. You have to use some money for mental health. You have to use some money for remediation and that kind of thing. There's different columns and some of it can be used for capital. So we couldn't use it all anyways.
So I normally would agree with you that we, we vote separate projects, but I'm wondering what I don't want to happen is if we say, okay, 125 for the tennis court or whatever it is. And then we need 25,000 more. You know, I'd, I'd rather have a little bit of a buffer and like vote this pot of money that we have flexibility. We'll update you, but you know, up to X amount from because E and D, we also have to send the approval to the towns. And we are talking about using some E and D, not just school choice. So I think we have to vote a school choice amount and an E and D amount for these projects. And then we have some flexibility on how it gets spent, if that's comfortable for everyone.
Are you able to provide that trouble?
Yes.
So we're voting on the project, approving the project, but we're not approving the specific financing of it or?
So I'm, you're going to approve the specifics financing, but, okay. So let's, let's talk about the real numbers and maybe that'll help. And somebody jump in if I'm not making any sense because my head is still not 100% clear. So the tennis court and the boiler, leave the roof separate because we have the ban for that right now. So we have 350,000 for the tennis court and let's say 500,000 for the boiler. So 850,000. So 100,000 we're asking for the towns for the tennis courts. So we've got 750,000 left to fund internally. My recommendation is that we take 100,000 of this year's E and D money, which I hate to say is not yet. I hate to say is not yet certified, I'm still in conversation, um, with our auditors about that, so we're still working on things. Um, but the estimate is around four hundred and forty thousand right now preliminarily. He's going back and forth with D O R about some of our encumbrances and the way that things are booked. We don't anticipate an issue, it's just how the state wants to see things come in. So if we have four hundred and forty thousand in E and D, historically, we've taken two hundred thousand to help offset the budget. That leaves us two hundred and forty thousand, I'm recommending we pull a hundred thousand of that off for the tennis courts, um, which leaves a hundred and fifty on the tennis court and five hundred for the boiler, so we're at needing six hundred and fifty thousand, which I recommend we take from school choice. Uh, our school choice balance, as Darius mentioned quickly, has grown over the years, one, because we've been able to offset with ESR money from certain expenditures. Two, if you recall, we did freeze our budget in twenty twenty and had some additional savings, and twenty twenty-one went in at, um, level funding, so had no increase. So there was no major change to our school choice, and we have seen an increase in our revenue. For example, I've looked already at the preliminary numbers for this year's amount, we're looking at bringing in about a hundred thousand more than what we budgeted for last spring, so.
Did I, excuse me, did I miss a step somewhere, did we get from two ninety to three fifty because we had the math wrong?
So.
Estimating higher, just because it's higher, if we see two ninety, and it comes in at three twenty-five, because Shelley wants it to be on the higher side.
We're also gonna have to pay not included in these estimates here, is we're also gonna have to pay for bid documents, we're gonna have to pay for help from FERC. We're probably gonna have to pay Berkshire Design while they've already designed the courts. I'm sure they're gonna charge us to oversee and continue that walkthrough process. Um, we do have to pay for, uh, it says up right there for the boiler plans, winter twenty twenty-three, waiting on estimate. We have to have the engineering company who did the study now design the specs, so I don't think two ninety is our real number, I think we are gonna be closer to three twenty-five or three fifty for the tennis courts.
Would the same thing hold true for the boiler?
Yeah, so, um, what, the three, is it three twenty-five is the cost estimated for the boilers, and then we're estimating a hundred and seventy-five-ish for install and then those other pieces, so that's where I rounded up to five hundred. So thi- this is a lot of money, you know, we're talking about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, or eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two projects. Um, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Can I just make sure that I've got the, I think I missed a step in the math?
Okay.
Okay. Three hundred and fifty for tennis, five hundred for boiler, that's eight hundred and fifty, a hundred comes from the town, seven hundred and fifty's left. Okay, a hundred comes from E and D.
Correct.
Six hundred and fifty left.
From school choice.
And we're gonna take all that from school choice.
Yes. School choice, where it currently stands to be projected at the end of this year is one point nine million. Significantly higher than it has ever been in the history of the school. I think, um, when I started here four years ago, we were around one point three. We've had, again, several years of growth in school choice. The other thing that's benefiting us this year in particular is, it's not just our school choice, it's our charter numbers as well, so that gets lumped into there. Our charter numbers are down compared to the prior year, so we have less kids going to charter schools, which means we're paying out less charter expenditure to the state.
You know about how much, about how many fewer kids?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
You remember at one time?
Oh, yeah.
Not too long ago, it was a wash.
Yes.
It was a wash.
Yes.
I mean, we are really, really fortunate in this district. Darius and I talk about this a lot, and I know he hears it from some of his superintendent counterparts, I hear it from the business managers, there are districts that are upside down, regional schools on school choice and charter. We're netting.
Upside down by a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, like, half a million upside down. Where they have to spend, they have to send the money out the door as part of their budget.
And we're netting half a million positive. So, you know, between low charter and low choice going out, our choice going out is very minimal, and our choice coming in is significant. So, this is one of those things, I don't wanna go down a weird rabbit hole, but we always hear at town meetings sometimes how, you know, school choice is, is the downfall. It really helps small schools like ours stay alive, and I don't wanna go there, Phil, I can see.
It's a bit foolish to celebrate the increase in it, though, because it's, it's, it's other towns misfortune, other schools imploding, and, um, and, and it does great harm to the sending towns.
It can.
Yep.
It also is a great benefit to some of the students, some of the, some of the reason our special, our, um, choice numbers are so high is because we're servicing special education students that are getting their needs met here that they weren't getting in their home district, so, you know, pros and cons to both, I suppose. So, back to the math and the numbers, one point nine is a significant number for us to be holding in school choice, it's, um, well past one year in arrears, which is typically best practice and what a lot of school tries to do, so I think we're in a safe spot at six fifty, that brings us down to one point two after that six fifty. And, uh, looking forward in FY twenty-four budget, we're still only spending what we're bringing in, we're not exceeding revenues, so we should be able to stay around that one, one point two million, which is a comfortable spot for us to be in, should there be some other
Catastrophe.
catastrophic event that we're not prepared for.
Thank God for rainy fun, rainy day fun.
We're really fortunate, and, you know, we have, this is sort of our capital stabilization fund, that this has functioned in the same manner of what we're trying to set up, because now we have the ability to spend nearly a million dollars on these projects that our towns can't absorb the cost for, so we're really fortunate.
We don't have to ask the towns to spend school choice money either.
We do not.
Really, right?
So there are, there is no, coming from a capital committee, there is no capital request from, to the towns this year, other than paying their, other than their assessment on the bond.
And the town's.
And, and while the CPA, that's not, you know, that's not, it's different in the capital, we're trying to give them an avenue where it's not gonna affect their free cash. And again, this is in cooperation, talking with, you know, the select board members over multiple times about, there are certain towns that don't have the free cash this year. Um, if we came to them with any capital improvements, we'd, they'd simply say, we can't do that this year. Um, so by saying, you know, going after the CPA bonds, which is a silo of money, um, in, in relatively small amounts, when you, when you talk about some of the CPA projects. It's a kind of a smart, you know, it's smart, and, you know, the towns should be, um, as you said, you should be very pleased that we're able to take care of these projects in-house and not go to them for another, with another bill.
So the, the vote, I think, the reason I'm asking for flexibility is, say we have a hundred thousand in E and D, and we say, okay, we're gonna earmark that for tennis courts. If we only need ninety thousand, we could probably really use that ten thousand for the boiler project, so if we have some flexibility and have the vote be that we're approving, um,
The total.
The total number with a hundred from E and D and six fifty from school choice for the tennis courts and the boilers, it gives us a little bit of flexibility on paying the bills when we actually come in.
If we were to, if we were to have a need to go over that number, we'd have to come back to it.
If we ask for it, if one lump sum, if the, if someone definitely opposed to tennis courts, was actually caught up in the boiler at that point?
I mean, here you sit.
If the tennis courts didn't pass.
If we open the one sum, does, do we have to, if, if someone's against one portion of the other, but we're just running toward a roadblock in one area or the other, are they both now caught up in that roadblock?
Well, there won't be any, I don't think there'll be any roadblock, because, because they're only asking for a hundred thousand broken up percentage.
So I guess we would have to come back and have a conversation if the towns rejected the hundred thousand request and then reconsider.
Right, and they could also reject, we do, if we do spend, um, E and D, we do send a letter to the town that says we are gonna be spending it in this fashion, they have thirty days to hold a special town meeting, um, to stop the spending of the E and D in that fashion. Usually, we, in the past, we've given reasonable plans and that kind of stuff, and they've been kind of approved by the select board, so that could also be, you're right, that could snag, uh, we would have to preempt, we'd have to have a school committee meeting, decide how we wanna address it, and then do a re-vote to move things.
I think you underestimate the power of this pickleball.
Yeah.
A lot of sway with them.
Well, the bounce off with Deerfield, like, you run into a snag, in the beginning of all this, you said, just the way you hear back from Deerfield. Deerfield says, no, we don't want to do this.
So Deerfield hasn't requested information from us for their CPA application. The other three towns has, have asked us to help fill out the CPA application.
If we go ahead and just vote, just like with the track, we're just gonna hand it to the town.
That's an internal thing for them, we don't care where they get the money, right? It'd be a good, it'd be a good idea for some, somebody here.
Get it wherever you go.
Go into the town administrator and say, do you know about this?
So basically, if you vote, if you vote this tonight, I will make phone calls tomorrow, that says, this is officially, the request is going to come. We let them know, because they're, they're in their planning process, that this is what we plan on doing. They know that you're voting it tonight. If, if you vote this positive, I will be contacting them tomorrow that we are moving forward with this request, and, you know, and so on and so forth. I'll contact, you know, Casey or Deerfield and say, you guys hear anything from us, that kind of thing. Um, a lot of them are just starting their work now, they waited till after, um, the end of December, New Year's, and then they're kind of just, now they're budget season, so, um, per se, that Deerfield hasn't, it may also be that the CPA committee hasn't met either.
Yeah.
Which I think is really the case. I'm not sure if they see, so, and each town does it differently, so each, each form is different, each, you know, uh, kind of thing, and the approval process is different as well. It's very interesting. I, I think it's kind, interesting, Conway, CPA no longer is, um, approving the projects to go to town, they are just making sure they meet the qualifying areas, I just think that's very interesting that they're doing it. And everything goes to the town as long as it qualifies for CPA. But it's a smaller town, Deerfield, you know, maybe that would take a half a town meeting, I, I don't know.
It's, it's a good idea that it's, tennis court is very much a recreational facility, which is in the CPA statute, it's, this is like a very.
And, and we do have past practice on that, too, if people talk to you, they, they, the, uh, thirty-five thou, I believe it was thirty-five, it was forty-five thousand, repairs that were done were paid by CPA, done by Marty Barrett in two thousand thirteen.
But there, CPA is also, like you're saying about funds being divided, the towns are restricted. This percentage goes to recreation, this percentage goes to, to, uh, housing, this percent, and so they, they have to operate with it, and that too with their CPA.
Right, and again, looking at, looking at those numbers, those aren't, you know, for CPA, those aren't huge asks.
But, and although, and although you haven't talked about this, there's the issue of how the towns are gonna, um, fund their uh, portion of the track expenses this year. And because, because we, we borrow money for that, the, the school can't, the school, it's inappropriate for the school then to be asking CPA for that money, because it's already been borrowed, but the towns can fill those applications out, and that's what, in, in Conway, the select board's filling out the application for the, for the CPA to fund that, that service for, for the track.
Yeah, we'll talk about that piece of the assessment a little bit further in the budget process when we get there, but we are paying interest only again this year, so it's not significant yet, when we, when we hit, um, principal, it'll change dramatically, but.
It makes the passage of the budget, school budget more likely, when you can whittle the budget down.
So, can I clarify that we're voting on approving both projects and the eight fifty from the?
I mean, that's my recommendation, you guys get to make that call.
I think the only trade-off is the, the simplicity from, the funds have to shift from one to the other, right? And then the only thing is the risk, if something hits, but I defer to people who have more experience as to whether that.
You have full authority over school choice funds, so because we can move things around, if one project gets stuck, if, if they're going after the funding, they could go after your E and D. Realistically, you weren't gonna, I know you said you'd split E and D, but you really wouldn't wanna split E and D, because you'd be asking two different requests at a town, that would get complicated, you probably wanna put it all in one project, right?
Well, I think we can word the request that it'll be for these two projects.
But I know if you just move to one, so if there's questions, they're just the only.
That's the, the tennis court's not the one that's gonna be the budget, but.
Yeah.
Boiler, there's, there's gonna be a delay, there's gonna be a problem, it'll be the boiler, that, tennis court, that's, that's duck soup.
I mean, I guess the biggest risk is we're potentially on the line for another hundred thousand dollars, which still with one point two million in school choice, we could fund the tennis courts on our own.
And also, I understand that this is going to happen over another fiscal year. So these projects are gonna take two years to be done, so we will be replenishing some of our, some of our school choice and some of our E and D. I mean, E and D, we've been fortunate that we always have savings, and, you know, that's because of our conservative nature, that number could come in lower. And we have been using E and D to offset the assessment. So, problem isn't, you guys understand how that works, is that if you do it every year, you have a fake assessment. Because your assessment is two hundred thousand dollars less than what it should be, because you've been down, you've been paying off it with previous year's funds every year. It's, just to break down E and D even simpler, you're using last year's funds, two hundred thousand dollars, and we've done that for the last five years? So, we at some point probably have to wean ourselves off of using E and D to, to bring down the assessment. Because if there's gonna be a year you can't do it, and then our assessment's gonna go even higher, because we don't knock it down with that money. I don't know what people think of that, but I'm just kind of thinking about these practices that get complicated, so every time we look at E and D, immediately I say, well, two hundred thousand dollars less than it actually is. So we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars of it, and then we have another hundred thousand dollars for rainy day fund out of E and D. Because the other two hundred thousand dollars are probably gonna put toward assessment, because we did it in years past. I hope I didn't blow anybody's mind there, but this is just how we've been kind of doing things.
Well, I would say we go for the fifty, I know I brought up being certified, I think the risk sounds minimal.
Yeah. You want to?
Yeah.
You wanna, you wanna?
Yeah, I can, I can make a motion and just read what I have in front of me, yeah. Okay, so the motion is that we will undertake capital projects of the tennis court and boiler replacement. Three hundred, with an estimated three hundred and fifty going for the tennis court, five hundred going for the boiler. We'll ask for a hundred thousand from the town, we'll take a hundred thousand from E and D, and six hundred and fifty from school choice. And that's the full motion.
Is it helpful to have the cost broken down by each project, or to say eight fifty for both projects if you're looking at moving funds around?
Go on a hamstring yourself.
I mean, I just.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
As a whole, you have the total price.
Eight fifty for both projects and the wording of that.
Right, and they, you know, the projects are, is presented here. Right, so, uh, so same motion, it's just, it starts with eight hundred and fifty thousand for capital projects.
Tennis court and boiler, I think we showed up tennis court and boiler.
Yeah.
Yeah.
CPA have to get in there from the towns.
CPA does not have, it's not our CPA money, so the town decides.
Towns could pay for the hundred thousand anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, we are asking the CPA to pay for it. If they don't fund it through CPA, we didn't ask for it to pay for it in a different manner.
I thought when we talked to the town administrators, specifically thinking of Brian, said, you asked me for fifty thousand dollars, I'm gonna figure out how we pay for it, if we wanna use CPA.
That was at the track club, not the, not the tennis court. We didn't ask for CPA money for the track, we just said, you can pay, you can pay your bill with CPA if you want, it's your bill, you can pay for it however you want.
Yeah, they could pay with an.
We are actually going to each CPA, we're going to each CPA committee.
I don't think we are.
No.
No.
Sounds like you supplied already the information to the towns to do the application, right?
We're asking the towns for a hundred thousand dollars for these two projects, or for the tennis courts specifically. How the town funds it is not within our control.
Okay.
Right?
Correct.
Anyone else?
But the CPA for the tennis courts is the closest thing to a slam dunk that you've done in years, because, you know, I think very few people here understand the true power of the pickleballers, and it just, it num, it numbers, they're astounding. Conway pickleballers, there's close to two hundred of them in the little pickleballer club just in Conway, and.
You guys haven't built anything yet?
We're building our own special pickleball court, they already.
There's gonna be a, there's gonna be a way and home games, this is gonna be.
And Conway already has a budding rivalry, rivalry with the Deerfield pickleballer.
Chris is with the recorder, they're gonna have a whole section, it's gonna be sports, and then it's gonna be like pickleball.
And, and the pickleballers want these tennis courts up.
I was just kidding, when I was like, it's worth in that estimate to look at maybe one more space.
Yeah, I, I actually could.
You got a club now, next year we'll vote on it being.
Instead of doing this, we'll do it for the parking lot, that's how we'll pay for the parking lot, we'll be like, parking lot by day, pickleboards by first place.
I bet they'd be okay with that.
I'm pretty sure when we talk to them, but if, if you're not sold on that, then.
So what's Deerfield gonna do if Deerfield doesn't wanna give the forty-eight thousand dollars? What's the, what's the worst we would do? Take the forty-eight thousand and we pay it out of school choice?
Oh, yeah. Do everything out of school choice.
No, they don't all four have to agree, right?
Or out of ARPA funds or wherever they even pick it. That's their share. It's like any other capital.
Mostly I just want a point of order. We have a motion on the table that we can second.
Second for the purpose of discussion, so we can keep talking.
Right, then.
Just didn't want to leave that hanging.
For instance, right? We could totally do a friendly amendment to this.
I'm looking at the application that Darius and I worked on.
I realize.
Well, it says here, it says here, request a hundred thousand from four towns. Town determines funding source. CPA warrant, ARPA or other, right there, right?
Right there.
It says it right here, black and white.
So the CPA application says full name of entity submitting application, and it says Conway Grammar School, School Committee, that was for the stage curtain, right?
An epic application.
Oh, my God. So funny.
And it says the balance will be paid by E.
It says Frontier Regional School Committee on the application.
On the application that we're giving to towns to fill it?
For Conway's, it says Frontier Regional School Committee, as is the entity submitting the application.
Doesn't matter how, it doesn't matter, it's, no matter what you call it, it's me going in there and asking for it.
I just want to have the motion proper so that we're legally.
I feel like there was consensus in the subcommittee meetings that it was CPA from all four towns. So there's no surprises here at all.
No, so surprised. And I don't expect it to fail, but we should plan it with the expectation that it doesn't go the way we want it to go. So that we can have contingency. And I think the idea is that each, if the CPA is to shoot it down, then we have to come back and ask them to put it on their winter warrant.
Or this committee could decide to use other funds.
What we would like to cover, the project in place.
Right.
Is it broad enough? Because we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars from towns can to make an amendment that it says from the towns or CPA funding?
I think we do that to protect ourselves. That way, if we, the towns do CPA, one town says, we'd rather just take it from free cash, they have a ability to do that.
I think that works.
Motion to amend.
Great. Then you have to do.
Yeah, we have to do a vote on the.
You have to do a vote of the amendment and then vote to.
Just tell me when you're, when you're ready, after the.
Yeah. Do you want me to read the amendment?
Sure.
So it's now, the wording is we will request a hundred thousand, we request a hundred thousand dollars from the towns or from CPA funding divided by school share. That I've written right now. Does that seem right?
To be funded by the towns through CPA or.
Other sources.
Or other sources.
Okay, to be funded by the towns through CPA.
That gives the town flexibility.
Why we're getting involved in, how many towns have it funding this thing? From a hundred thousand from the towns, period. Wise men in waitlist, you figure out where you're going to get it from. If you're going to get it from CPA, if you're going to get it from ARPA, if you're going to get it out of the cookie jar, I don't care. But I, I added that moose will end up around our neck if we start putting in CPA, this, that, or the other thing. We're going to get shot. Leave it alone, period, a hundred thousand. You better give it to us, you figure out where it comes from.
Like any other capital article any other year.
Yeah, the only issues that added the capital planning committee with the select board members are there. They said they'd like to see us try to pay for it out of CPA.
We can't pay for it.
Right, but we can suggest, I guess we can suggest. I mean, they got to carry it. I'm hoping that our select board members that are part of that committee are going to carry the, carry the rock the rest of the way after we give it to them.
You know, I mean, wait the capital article for eleven thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars for an article for a CPA? Four eleven, that's the same thing.
Yeah.
Is the confusion there because we are on the application as the entity requesting this?
Yeah, that's I think what's confusing us.
That if we have it on the warrant that we are including that as a potential source, then that kind of validates that we are on the application requesting these funds?
Yeah.
Is that?
I think throwing in the or it doesn't hurt. I agree with you one hundred percent, but I think covering us in the vote that says town free cash and/or CPA.
Or other sources.
Or other sources, yeah. Regardless of basis.
And Bill, I just think we need to do it at this point because of the, you know, we have to, they're wording that, something about the CPA in there because that was the process up to this point. We've had, you know, it's been harmonious up to this, and we're really.
Yeah, I wasn't perfect at that part of the process. Chris, when you're ready, you need to do a roll call on the amendment first.
Yeah. So the amendment currently reads, we were pressed a hundred thousand to be funded by the towns through free cash CPA or other sources. So we got them. Yep. That was.
Yeah.
And then seconded. Did I second that?
I think, thought so, but.
Okay, great.
I think Bill did.
Okay.
Or, yeah, whatever, you might have just been the hand I saw.
Going to do a roll call?
Uh, you want me to read the, read the roll?
Sure. You want me to read the names and you just write them in?
Is it going to be a roll call, Will? I mean, can you just be a majority vote? Tabasco, you have to, you have to.
We don't have to roll calls anymore?
All there is here.
That's related.
Okay, there's nobody, yeah, there's no one on, okay.
Nobody on the table.
All, all in favor?
You better accept the amendment first and then you get a vote on the motion.
All in favor of the amendment as read, raise your hand. So moved. Here, back to the original motion. All in favor? So moved. And what do you want to do with the roof? Is that?
Oh, the roof, we do need a separate vote on. The roof should be really easy.
You tell us what, you tell us what to do.
Um, so we're looking for a vote to authorize borrowing of, because we do not have this four hundred thousand. It is already approved, but I need to go in, we will not do it until July, so we're in the new year. Um, but we need to borrow the four hundred thousand. Um, and you need to approve phase one of the roof project up to four hundred thousand dollars. Right, that's what we're looking for right now.
And then what we will do is we will have a discussion with you. Probably the best way to proceed on that. We'll put it out to bid next fall. This will come back and we'll have a discussion about where we're at, about how we do stage one. If we have enough to do both sections or if we're just going to do one, we'll come back to you, um, with that. I think it's probably the easiest, it's too many moving purchases, you know, to project that far away.
And we'll know if we're going to have extra Essar money and.
Correct, and if we need to apply any other school choice or Essar money to that. Or do we put in where, should we just say borrowing four hundred thousand?
For phase one?
For phase one, yeah. Um, from the ban, um, use the ban.
Yeah.
And.
Four hundred thousand doesn't cover either option.
It does not cover either option, so we're hoping we'll recoup some money from Essar funding. And then there may be a further discussion about additional school choice use, but we're going to cross that bridge down the road. We want to get this first step moving.
Right, with the idea that, that four hundred thousand will cover the gym, that the boys locker room area roof, which we're having the most leaks in. And so we're definitely going to be doing that, and then we'll see what the section, section, exit, the next section costs. Let's say together it's, I'll throw the number, they add like four, five hundred seventy-five thousand. So then how do we come up with a hundred seventy-five thousand? Do we have some, did we get relief from Desi to use that money? Or do we just use school choice? Or do we say not now, we're just going to do the boys locker? We'll make that decision when we have that official number.
Do you want to read it, Chris, please?
Yes, the motion is, um, to authorize roof replacement phase one capital project as described in supplemental materials, using up to four hundred thousand dollars of ban funds.
Borrowing four hundred thousand.
Borrowing, okay.
Right? Borrowing four hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's a, yes.
It's a loan.
From our bond anticipation note, that's what the ban stands for.
I figured it's that, that's it, the old interest rate.
How big is the ban though?
No, it'll go out for bid at whatever the market rates are in July.
For whatever portion you want to vote.
So we can, we, we will have to renew this, um, nine hundred and thirty that we're already borrowed and add the four hundred thousand. We're going to be in a position from next fall to be discussing how we want to proceed because we only have one more year of interest only. You know, what type of loan do we want to roll that into long term? So, um, it might be beneficial to split up the four hundred thousand from the nine hundred and thirty, but we have worked with, um, Unibank as our financial advisor, so they'll give us some guidance on.
We'll get done just in time with the fifth next to last interest rate, like that will go up with the grant. You can put down, you can put down yourself as a motion.
Sure.
And be as a second or something.
I'm a second.
All in favor for the roof phase one? So moved. That didn't take too long.
A lot of money.
Thank you. Darius and Bill, both fell on work in subcommittee.
Darius, thank you for already getting the Conway applications in.
For the pickleball?
No, for, for the, for the CPA, we already got the app, we had, we had to do the applications immediately.
Do business, uh, budget timeline?
Do you want to share number four from the application?
I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, it's worth sharing.
I probably remember what it is.
There was another one too, there was number four, there was like number eleven or something. Yeah, you should, go ahead.
I have it.
So they, they, they ask, just because we need levity, levity for just a moment, they ask a ton of questions. And one of them is how will this project, this is the, the curtain in the gym at Conway.
For Conway.
How will it protect the? What is it?
I'm getting it because you gotta, you gotta hear it.
Conway's got a curtain.
Fireproof, or it's fireproof.
That's the problem, yeah.
It's.
Have you tested it?
The garden's match of chances.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
In what way? In what ways will this, this, the curtain, um, application I had to follow? In what ways will the project protect endangered resources? I wrote town board members will be able to hide behind it at town meeting if necessary.
Poor Phil.
Oh, my God, I was laughing. He's, he's a sensitive to me to proofread. I'm like, really?
Oh, we submitted it that way. I see, if they don't have a sense of humor, we're not getting your curtain. All right, what's next?
Budget timeline?
Budget and timeline. Do you want to do the January budget spiel?
Sure. We met for the first time tonight, made our first little preliminary glimpse of, of Michelle's artwork. And, uh, nothing's, nothing's going out yet for public consumption. We just, we had our first look at it like an hour and a half ago. But the next time we get together, you guys will have some things to look at because we're so far out with, uh, the governor's budget and everything else. You really, the pieces that really make things fit are, they're all just abstract, really abstract right now. The towns are going to be barking for them pretty soon. We don't have them. Forget that one. Cause the new government gets five extra weeks this year or when they get elected or whatever.
So that goes right into what the timeline is talking about. So this year's timeline is going to be a little weird because as Bob just said, a new governor's allowed five additional weeks to present their budget, which puts the budget at the first week in March. Okay? We have to have, March first is Wednesday. By the, by the eleventh, we have to have a budget to the towns.
That's.
Okay, so, you know, the governor doesn't know that we have a regional agreement and all this, I'm sure she's very concerned about that. So, so we have to, if that budget comes out on Wednesday or Thursday, we're going to have to have a meeting like probably, right now we're scheduled for the seventh, which is a Tuesday. We're probably going to have to have a meeting on the seventh and then eighth. Okay? And we'll probably, um, I'm saying when I say we probably, it means I'm thinking aloud, but we will probably have our public hearing on the seventh because that'll be the draft of it. You can always change your budget after the public hearing, the following meeting and approve it on the eighth. But you really, having one meeting, when the, you will, without the governor's budget, we don't know the assessments. Now, we can project, but we said, we are very nervous on doing our own math. You know, with, it's a very complicated formula and then four towns and yada, yada, yada. If we're wrong on that, it's going to be very ugly if we start sharing that, so.
I'm not wearing that.
And Shelley doesn't, and Shelley's the one doing the math, so if she's saying that she, you know, so we have templates that are given to us by our association, not the state, to help guide us so we have an idea of what, what to expect. But anyway, so we're not going to be able to present that until the week of the fifth. And it's, you know, so we have, so we're going to have to pre-schedule two meetings that week, the seventh and the eighth. Basically have back-to-back meetings on the budget. The good news is that maybe just be only the budgets, which means we'll be, could be relatively short if we're, the rest of the budget will be developed, you know, where we're at percentage points. And if you had to, you know, shift things that would happen that week, but you know, the bulk of the information would be already out there to you folks. Does that make sense?
So we'll work to have, based on what the subcommittee came up with, we'll work to have a draft for you to look at in, um, February, but it, it's probably, it definitely won't have the assessment numbers if the budget's not released. She has five weeks, maybe she'll be quicker, we can hope, um, that we'll get numbers before March first, but.
So I think you go, so I have to be able to, I have to post the, um, the, the public hearing on the budget fourteen days prior to the hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and post the seventh as our public hearing. And then we can, and as we get closer, we just need to have forty-eight hours notice to post the eighth as the second meeting of the, if that, if the seventh. So let's say the governor does, um, let's say she, you know, releases the budget, you know, the, you know, during, you know, during the week of the twentieth or something like that. We'll be able to, we could have a, we could set a meeting prior to that and then have our public, um, discussion and then have our public hearing and vote the budget the same night. It is the week of, does that sound? I do need to pick the date of the public hearing fourteen days in advance though. It's got to go in the paper.
We might get lucky and the new governor may come out in February with that.
It's, it's possible, but we got a plan that it's not.
Yeah. I do, I say this every year, so here I'll go. Well, I don't want it to give us the perception of having the public hearing inside my clock and vote on the budget today because that tells anybody who's watching that what I came to the public meeting to tell you cannot possibly be incorporated into that budget because you're going to vote on it in a half hour. So we at least need to do it the following day.
Okay.
You know, I, I think, because you got, you got to give some respect to the process, the optics of the thing, you know? It looks like we're, yeah, okay, public hearing, okay, are we done yet? Let's go vote. The perception is that the public hearing means nothing if we do it that way. Please don't do it that way because it don't, it doesn't look good for us.
And the public hearing is going to be even more important, I think, this year because typically the towns have a sense of where our budget numbers are in advance of the public hearing. We've likely already met with a couple of them, reviewed the numbers. We've given the info to town administrators so they can start planning. They may have asked questions. That's not really going to happen this year.
That's, that's typically why you don't see a lot of the town fathers have the public hearing. Because we have, we have taken the show on the road already.
So we probably, so what I'm hearing is make the public hearing on the seventh and a school committee on, meeting on the eighth, which that's, um, Tuesday and Wednesday. Thursday currently Deerfield has a school committee meeting, so.
While you're, while you're going posting happy, you can post the budget subcommittee meeting for the eighth before this meeting. So if we have to do something as a result of.
Yeah, yeah.
What we absorbed on Monday night or the seventh, we'll do it before we come in here. And Shelley will have a whole half hour to get her ready to pass out. Could ask her more than that.
Okay.
Thank God for Shelley.
No. Thank God for Excel.
So I will send this, I will send this, I will send this all out to you tomorrow for those of you who are kind of like trying to, you know, so that you have it in writing to, to put in the calendars and such, that the public hearing will be on the seventh, the final of the vote, the budget will be on the eighth. We, hang on, let me just mention this to you.
This is February.
March.
It's on March. Okay. Shelley passed right out backwards in that chair.
We could, we could ask Deerfield to move their school committee meeting to the eighth and then have our meetings on Tuesday and Thursday. That would give us a little bit of time to discuss any of the changes. There's only a, you think you have a, it's pretty just moving stuff around. I mean, if there's people doing changes, it's changing, it's not like, you gotta go.
Point it's going to be really hard is if something came out of the public hearing that was like, hmm, the decision was made to cut a hundred thousand dollars. the decision was made to cut $100,000 from the budget. Like, that's really a problem.
And that would be an.
And a day's turnaround.
Unanticipated shot from the blind.
What is the, I guess I'll ask for the kid, maybe I should know it. What's the penalty if you miss the regional agreement and don't come to the 11th?
I think you could be sued civilly and be forced by a judge to comply next time.
Or chat, have somebody changed their town meeting date?
They can't, it's in their bylaws.
It's in their bylaws.
We've already kind of vetted that.
Maybe when we have nothing else to do, we can talk about.
No, of all the things, of all the legal jeopardy that you can do, of all the legal jeopardy is.
All right, so we won't, we won't play with that date. Always know what the punishment is when you play with the dates, right? You know, it's kind of, you just hope there's not a major snowstorm now that will happen. All right, so zoom, we'll do 7th and 8th.
Timeline for remote meetings.
What's that?
Still within the timeline for remote meetings.
Oh, well, great, if it's snow, right, yes, yes, good point, good point, very good point.
You got him up in Nashville? Or Plainfield? Wow, I already know I'll be out of work. That's why I guess I was asking.
Yes, join us remotely from the sunny shores of wherever heck you are.
Bahamas or.
And we'll curse you the whole time.
You can continue.
All right, so, yeah, so I'll get that information up. That is the budget timeline. The next question is school choice.
Yes.
So normally we do this later in the year. George has requested that we do it earlier because it allows for better planning by the school. Because we get the school choice applications in, we usually hold them until you guys make a vote and then usually it is in April. And then families aren't really finding out until mid-April or May what their plans are for next year. It puts us in the same cycle as other schools and private schools. So as people are making their plans by knowing in advance that, that, you know, we're accepting school choice and that we can go ahead, come, you said February 1st, right, February 1st, that in February that you've been accepted to Frontier for the following school year. So we're kind of moving up the process. And then if people haven't, then it, it allows the lottery system to also happen and people after that point can come in on a first come, first served basis of left there were slots. Makes sense?
Move to approve administration's request. But also in the past, you, you have the discretion on our numbers also. I'm looking at, I am looking at George. Yes, but that's usually done before at the discretion of the principal, the numbers, you know it.
But this is going to help us with scheduling as well.
Oh, yeah.
Which is really important because we're in the front, we're going to be, we're already processing, starting that. We have, Bill made the motion second. Bill makes a second. Probably when you get ready. All in favor? So moved. And we knew about the $4,000 from Yankee Campbell.
You do need to vote to accept.
I know. Any other discussion on that? I'll make a motion to accept the $4,000.
A second.
Gladly. But that has nothing to do with graduation and scholarships. That's, so, all in favor?
Christmas money.
So moved.
Did we receive, are they, are they still giving you scholarships?
Yeah, we got, we got the scholarships as well. I have nothing. Portland's not here to talk about the collaborative. And Darius, do you have any quick words of wisdom?
Yeah, I do want to give you guys an update. We're too nice here. It's getting late in the day. I do want to give, just give you kind of a review of some of the superintendents before. I know you said part of Pakistan, but I do want to talk about the CSMI equity audit because it does involve you. So they will be visiting, so right now they've sent out, again, our equity audit. They sent out, we have the information now that we're collecting data. It's a lot of data, over 60 data points that the central office is putting together and different administrators are putting together to send to them to review prior to the visit. They are visiting March 20th to 22nd. They are going to want to interview school community members. So what we will be doing is reaching out to folks. If you want to be interviewed and be a part of that, I don't know if they're going to be doing individual or small groups, but they are going to be looking at different, different, or many, we have, it'll be interesting. We have to figure out how they're going to approach our district because we have a lot of school community members. Normally, so they usually ask, in their question, they ask like, can you give us a list of all your school community members and their tenure? And so, and all this kind of information because looking for equity within our group. And like, okay, I have 23 school community members. And so, so, you know, he's like, oh, we're going to have to work out how we're going to do that. So we're not going to do individual interviews while 23, which they may do in like a seven-member district. So some of that still will come, so we'll figure out what that is. But I do want to put on your radar if you are, you know, want to be a part of that, that kind of thing that they are going to do. Those are three days they'll be here.
When is that?
The 20th or 22nd. Those three days. They also will be doing surveys to the community, including parents and staff. And then we also are collecting, we're collecting work from the classrooms. Sorry, artifacts from the classroom around different points where they want to look at. And they want to look at what are we doing for diversity work and equity work and then some other kind of lesson things so they can look at rigor across the district and that kind of thing. And they're basically doing these, they do these different things. They're looking at the data and then they're looking, they're going to have, they'll be visited in the classrooms and in our schools for those three days. And then interviews and they're going to be triangulating information that they're collecting to make sure that it, you know, if we're saying we're presenting and doing this, they want to see that they're doing this. And so they have that as part of their, their equity. So any questions on that? So there'll be more information coming on that. It's kind of, I did send out notes, this should be all on that, to the community, letting people know that this is coming and that, because there's going to start being talk about it as it gets closer and closer.
Yeah, I guess that's part of my question is what the plan is for communication to both to help to have there be buy-in from the school, but inside the school community and outside the school community.
So right now I'm visiting, and I just admit it's Sunderland staff today. I'm going to each staff meeting to explain to all the teachers and staff, you know, what the process is, what their role, their, their role is, can and can't be and that kind of stuff, and also reducing anxiety. Because some people say, it's an audit and they're going to come into your classroom, you know, it sends a lot of fear out there. So I'm doing that there. You know, I started with the first communications there. I don't have all the information of like when they're going to do the survey and such. So I'm just kind of like preparing people that it's coming. When I get that, then I'll be sending that out as well. Am I answering your question?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, is that something that they provide assistance with? To give more communication about exactly what this process is to help to make sure that it, to lay some of that anxiety and fear about what this process is and what we hope to get out of this?
No, I don't, I don't think they're going to, they're going to provide the survey and such and they collect data. We don't do that internally, they do that externally. We're going to have to provide the communication. I mean, I have, you know, employing information like the last letter was written from their, you know, their proposal and such. I can see if they have templates and such.
Or maybe can provide guidance for you as to how other people have approached that situation where there may be some concern about fear or anxiety or whether or not this is a process of checking a box versus making some more robust changes, which may be on the flip side of the fear and anxiety.
Right.
Maybe this is a, I'm just going to go through the motions space as opposed to making some more meaningful change that.
Right, and understanding that the, the audit is really looking at your systems and processes of the district and do you have those in place? And I shared this before, I think that when I, I read a sample report, we don't have all the systems. And of course, it's a utopian district that they're, you're modeling against, so. But, you know, I think there's going to be plenty to build a strategic plan from this when it's done. There isn't a lot of, you know, the community input between the interviews and the survey, that, that's the community input. They're going to be looking about what's, what we have for place and structures, you know, what we have for policies, how we're implementing those policies and are they seeing it in their visits? So that's kind of the cross, the cross kind of discussion there. So I guess I, I'll, I'll take any feedback on how to communicate that, what's not being communicated or questions out there. Does that make sense? I mean, I can ask what they do for, other districts do for communication on it?
Yeah, I think that that would be probably worthwhile on both ends of the spectrum, that there may be people that don't care. This is a process that you go through, but there may be people both that have some fear and concern that they are going through this process, but there may be some people on the other side that have some concern that this may not be the step to make some appropriate changes. And I think it's probably worthwhile to see how to approach communication for both ends of the spectrum. Because at the end of the day, whatever comes out of this, you have to have enough community buy-in to take some steps.
Yes. I, I see, yeah, I mean.
I mean. You're not going to get to equity with a mandate.
Right, well, the fact that we're committing to look at this with its lens, I mean, I've seen the reports, they're not gentle. You know what I mean? They're, it's not a checkbox report. They're, we're going to have, I mean, read other reports, we're going to have deficiencies that, that we're going to have to make a plan about how we're going to address and what order. For those who, you know, I don't know what groups are saying, but if they're saying this, that, oh, is this the checkbox report? It doesn't mean anything. They should wait till they see the report before they begin to judge it. Because I really feel us doing that is very, us doing this report is very brave. And I think it's very brave for a district because we are not afraid to expose the fact that we are not a perfect district and we do have a lot of work to do. And this is going to help us hone in on those areas that we need to do next. I, I really do believe that. And I'm saying that because I've read other reports, they gave sample, you're like, okay, what does the report look like? Well, this is one. And I'm reading through it, I'm like, wow, you could change the name of a school very easily to our school and some of these lines that they're putting in there because we don't have many of the systems in place that you should have in order to have a more equitable school system. So, yeah, so.
I think it's worthwhile to explore how to.
Well, I definitely want to communicate out if there's, if there are people, you know, and so, yeah, I'll take, give me feedback on that and I can ask them if they have what they, they provide exemplars from other schools that do that kind of thing as well. Makes sense? All right. And just my two other ones were the, the superintendency agreement, our last meeting kind of went off the rails. And so we do need to, in the new year, I thought we'd have some kind of draft by now, but we're, we're working on it. So that's more to come. And then I started a outreach to the South County Senior Center and I invited the seniors to come to the building on, to come to Frontier on the 31st to visit the school, take a tour, talk about school, how it's changed, how it's not changed, and even have discussions about, you know, talking about what we're doing around equity, questions around that, and just really kind of opening up the building. I think it's a, I stole this idea from the MASC conference that another district did this, really bought buy-in. Also during the cold months, they're looking for activities to do, coffee conversations, seeing kids in action. I think every generation looks at the new generation as this, you know, I think, anyways, maybe I'm stereotyping that kind of thing, but it, it really is just to bring them in, feel part of the community and see where they're, you know, where taxes are going when we say we're doing these things. And we got a lot of great things going on in this building and when you visit during the day, which I encourage all of you do, it's really fun to walk around the building, seeing the kids doing their thing, the teachers doing their thing.
You feeding them too?
What's that?
You feeding them?
And I'm giving them coffee. I was told coffee, if you give them coffee and pastries, they will show up.
That's right.
So, so kind of excited about that, making that kind of outreach. Okay. Do you want me to go further into your questions to be on that?
On health?
Yeah.
Well, I guess it was going to be a good spin in to inviting the seniors into the building, but I'm wondering if there's a, a good way that we can be a little more robust with the health. Right now, what I have seen tends to be kind of, we're passing this along because the state said that we should give you an update if RSV is out there. The state gave us this thing that includes lots of stuff, including like pet safety during the holiday. I mean, it's really broad and I think we could do a better job with bringing some of that stuff home if we're going to do some of that health reach. It's really hard to see this post about health and not understand what's happening. It's very easy to kind of, yeah, let's see, we got that email and to not have it really give a sense of what's going on in this community. I mean, we're talking about three big viruses that hopefully are coming down at this point in time, but had a really big impact on the pediatric hospitals locally. I'm sure that, I mean, I'd be happy to make some contacts with some of the pediatric groups, both at Cooley and then at Bay State if that would be helpful to get you guys some local information and not just pass on stuff from the state. I mean, we all know that the situation in Boston is way different than what's here. There's kind of rumblings about upticks in strep cases. There's some, I think, probably better information that we can, I know that testing for things like COVID is in a way different space and monitoring for this is in a way different space. Unfortunately, outcomes are in a far different space, but it doesn't necessarily mean that any of these illnesses aren't impacting staff absences or student absences. And as we talk about how to keep these kids engaged and how to protect people who may have immune conditions that getting the flu may be something different, may mean that they need to come off of some of the medications that they have because it impacts the viral medication. There's a, I think, a lot of ways that we can just talk about this in a more meaningful way.
Okay. I kind of want to connect you with Kara to talk about that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Because I had a conversation with her earlier today, which is a follow-up, and about adding more to the next, about what we are doing. Because there's some stuff that we are putting newsletter, like we are giving Board of Health updates on attendance rates of staff and students and.
So we're giving that to the Board of Health, but we're not giving it to our local community?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, giving raw data to people without evidence to.
But you can like water that stuff down into, we've seen an uptick in absences related to upper respiratory infections. You know, whether that's flu, RSV, COVID, these things are circulating around as we've confirmed with local hospital systems. But there's some of that that can be easy without pointing out broad data.
Yeah.
I was wondering like who would that come from? What, from the nurse leader?
I think that that would be the kind of thing that I, that if, if you had some contact, I mean, the hospital systems put these reports out on a very regular basis there, especially through this winter. There have been weekly updates in terms of what the statuses are of these things. So pediatrician offices are also very well versed in terms of what's circulating around. There's some relatively easy context to not have people generate new bits of information just for Frontier that as you get these updates about what's circulating around in the community, can you also include us so that we can inform our community about what's going on?
I was just thinking of the context of it and who would be responsible. Wanted to come from a medical person or a nurse leader or.
Right now, I, I kind of set up, you know, I want to say I kind of set, I've set up this year that all medical information is coming from the nurse leader. And the only time that it would come from me is if there is a change in policy or scheduling or something, a major change in the operations of the school, that it needs to come from the authority that's making that decision. But any medical updates about different things needs to come from the nurse leader. It's also, you know, she has, you know, she can write the stuff better than I can and also she has that, that's what her role is. And so I want to get that, this is what I'm saying, I want to get that feedback to what else could be included in those.
I think it's just a way to bring it back to having something that is just a little more meaningful for people that might be making decisions about whether to get vaccinated or should I put that off further? Should I wear a mask? You know, all those types of things and with, yeah, changes in policies in regards to that thing. Ship has sailed and oftentimes brings up lots of raw emotions for people. I just mean, I think we do a better job being effective in what we're communicating to people if we're going to keep doing health communications, passing on information from the state. I don't think it's effectively doing what we wanted to do.
And then passing on to the parents, you know, sending it home like a newsletter.
Well, right now, that's been going through the parent square with a, and which is, I think you don't have to have a worksheet or anything, just electronically. And I think that it hasn't been inundated like every second, getting an email that says something. I think that they have spaced out.
I want to take what your feedback is and make sure it gets translated right to Kara's putting it out.
Yeah, I'd be happy to set up a call for her.
Set it up.
So Monday, there was the first couple of districts in the state that did go to masks a few days ago.
Yeah, yeah. And then the COVID rates in Franklin meet the CDC criteria for high transmission and recommendation for mask wearing. But also this is bigger than just COVID because there's lots of other stuff that's circulating around right now. So it's not like this isn't just, this is just what we do to just generally keep our communities and the people who we love and trust healthy.
Anybody else have anything?
Blessings are due.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.